Okay, we are officially live on Facebook as well. Before we get started, I know Alex already knows because he also serves on BZBA, but we have a brand new Assistant City Attorney and he has graced us this evening. Darren, how are you, sir?
Good, thank you very much, Andrew. I'm doing fine and good evening, everyone.
Darren.
Good evening, Darren.
Good evening.
Is Stephen with us?
Stephen is with us, yes. Jason, Bud, Ed, you guys have everybody?
Not yet. I think John still has not logged on.
Okay, we'll just give it a couple more minutes and then Pat, it's all yours.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, I always have some technical difficulties.
Where is John?
We are all here.
All right, Pat, it's your show.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. Call the roll call, please.
Emily, you there? She was ready to go. Emily?
We can start in alphabetical order and have Mr. Benner go.
Yeah.
Here.
Yes. Mr. Collinum.
Here.
Mr. First.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Thank you. And.
Mr. Zollers.
Here. Okay, are there any changes or modifications to the minutes, previous minutes? Sorry. Hearing none, those will stand as approved. Andrew confirmed that this is the only agenda item, so this is an approval of the agenda's fine. Those that are speaking, if you would please raise or virtually raise your right hand. And before we begin, everyone addressing the commission, please raise your hand and repeat after me. Say I do. Do you swear affirm the testimony you gave in front of the commission will be truthful, so please answer, I do. Thank you, guys. Anything, any public comment at this point? Okay, unfinished business, there is none. New business is one item, application 2021-5020. If staff could tee this up for us, then we'll turn it over to questions and comments.
There she is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I was having microphone issues. Okay, this first case is for 1220, 1222 South Wagner Road. Application number 2021-5020. This in the suburban residential zone on three parcels and the applicant is requesting planning commission approval of a major site plan for the construction of a new residential development approximately nine acre site. The project will consist of 80 townhome units. And the development did receive conditional use approval at the last quarter zoning and building appeals meeting on February 18th. And I guess with that, if the applicant wants to add anything or tell us more about the project.
Yeah, whoever's speaking on behalf of the applicant, if you would state your name and company and address, that'd be helpful, please.
Hey, guys, this is John Spagnola with JS Builders, 257 Grove City Road, Slipper Rock, PA. Ed Moore is going to be giving the presentation for our company. He's the engineer that designed the plan with Bud Scheffler. And I'm here also to answer any questions anyone may have. So I'll turn it over to Ed here.
All right, I'll share my screen here. Hopefully this. Can I get permission to share the screen?
Ed, hang on one second. Go ahead, you're good now.
Is that coming through? Awesome. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time tonight. Again, my name is Ed Moore with Scheffler and Company, 1712 Mount Nebo Road, Swickley, Pennsylvania, 15143. And for everyone who's new to the project, I'll give a quick overview of some of the key points and then we'll just open it up for some for some discussion. The site itself is located on the eastern side of South Wagner Road, just south of the Messiah Lutheran Church. Property itself is approximately nine acres and as mentioned, zone SR suburban residential. The current plan is shown in front of you, proposes 80 townhome units. There are three new streets into the development. Each street is planned to be privately owned. There are two access points onto South Wagner and one to the church property to the north. And all of the new streets will have sidewalks on both sides. We're also proposing an eight foot wide asphalt path trail along the front of the property as well as at the back of the property running just on the eastern side of the detention basin up to the new cul-de-sac. As far as there'll be a small mailbox cluster at the cul-de-sac for all the residents to get their mail, there'll be no individual mailboxes. They'll all be in the cluster at the cul-de-sac. All the proposed development is outside of the existing floodway to the new stream to the southeast, I should say. There will also be a single central stormwater management basin. Will be used to control any increase in stormwater runoff. See the new landscaping we're proposing on the perimeter of the project. While it's not final, we're still working on some of the details for that, but you can see the landscape that's proposed here. Each lot itself will have a dawn to dusk lamp post and there'll be some lights at the intersection of the main roads as well for lighting. We do have some slides of the townhome units, what those will look like, and I believe those were included in your packets when we made our submission. So I guess with that, unless John, you have something to add, we can just open it up to questions from here.
Okay, commissioners, Mr. Hicks, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Want to thank everyone here tonight. So I had a few questions, was going to pull up my notes here. A few questions in regards to the plan. I think we have some technical things. In regards to the landscape plan, just reviewing what's being proposed in the landscape plan, I don't see any landscaping along Wagner Road. And I don't see any street trees along the interior private roads. Those are a little bit concerning. And then my third comment on the landscape plan is that it's basically just two species. I think you got red maple and blue spruce or some sort of evergreen, but there's not like a variety of species and just working in the industry, it just seems like I think we learned from some of the blights of ash, some of those things to try to mix up the species of the different trees and the community so that if there's ever something that takes out one's particular species, that the particular development wouldn't get kind of wiped out with all the trees. So I think those are my comments on the landscape plan. I had a question in regard to the setback on Wagner Road. Obviously, one of the biggest issues with folks that live on Wagner Road is the traffic and the city has been taking the initiative to come up with a plan to be able to improve Wagner Road over a number of years in multiple phases in order to address a lot of those problems. And I just want to make sure, because I don't see anything on the drawings that says what the setback is from whatever the new property line will be on that part of the parcel from Wagner Road. So if you guys, if anybody could address that, I would appreciate it just to make sure that it meets our code in reverse. So that would technically be a front yard setback, I believe.
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Hicks. We did review your guys' proposed Wagner Road expansion and did design in accordance with that.
So that'll probably involve dedication of right of way in order to accommodate that. New, whatever that new property line will be, your front property line, we would need to know what the your front yard building setback would be.
Well, it's a little hard to sort of understand because we don't have the final engineering done currently right now, Mr. Hicks. So to understand sort of where that is going to eventually be, you know, that's we're about a year away from being able to fully do that. Currently, right now, with the current setback, it is in compliance to all zoning measures for front yard setback.
Yeah, I would just hate to approve something that within a year we know is going to become a non-conforming issue. So and, and you know, that doesn't impact all the units. It's just probably three townhouse units along there, maybe, maybe just two, but I just want to make sure that's being addressed here. You know, not crazy about having two separate curb cuts. And I think we've covered this on a, on a different proposal and, and planning commission member Benner and I have discussed this. Just having two different curb cuts along Wagner Road and both of them being full access. I don't even think the last one that we had was full access. And that kind of ties into the traffic study. Well, the, the traffic letter that we received that didn't calculate the number of trips. Seeing enough of these calculations in the traffic study trips, my only comment would be it appears based upon the number of units that your unit count should be below what's going to be required for a traffic, I believe, access study for city's requirements, but and all the other submissions that we've had before this, there were actual counts still provided for that. So I didn't see those unless I missed those. I would like you to also please address that. And then my final comment would just be building elevations, specifically the side elevations. I believe we got some side elevations. And I think their expectation would be that there would be some upgraded elevations for the buildings that face Wagner Road. Those are obviously very close to Wagner Road, very visible, and as of right now, have absolutely no landscaping in front of them. And we would want to see that those would, they would be, you know, high quality in order to ensure that they look nice along Wagner Road. So those are all of my comments, trying to be as concise as possible and that'll be it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Hicks. Regarding, this is Mr. Zollers, I have a question. So on this screen we're looking at, and I don't remember the name of the road, it would be, you know, you turn left at the church and go down the hill, you know, what I read I'm talking about, can't remember the name of it. Where is that on here? Is that like to the, just past the red line on the top left corner? Is that the drug, the road going down that hill there? Yeah, right, right over to your left across Wagner.
So, so Mr. Zollers, what you're talking about is a private drive that's here for the church? So, so this line that goes up, you know, that's shown on their plans is conceptual. I believe the mayor and myself, he got information from the church that says they do not want to have the connectivity that's to the north up there. So this was addressed in the BZBA meeting as well as what if, you know, the connectivity could not be made, then the adjustment in engineering would be that they would just have a couple of parking spots up there and it would just be a stub off there to allow for those units to have access to the other residential streets, but not a connection point from one parcel to the next.
Okay.
If you're talking about what's over to the west side, that's just a private drive into a condominium and apartment complex.
Right, okay, but further, further north, the development, the housing development on the west side down the hill, that driveway, where I'm going with this is, there's going to be driveways entering and exiting Wagner and then we're adding two more you know, curb cuts on Wagner and is this, is the county and everyone that's going to do the Wagner Road redevelopment going to play to this card or we're going to get ourselves in trouble because we don't know what that Wagner Road correction is going to be?
Well, so as far as the Wagner Road correction, so and if you're talking about, you know, lane width, we discussed this in the BZBA, so they're not going to be building the multi-use trail because we don't want to have them put something in that we're going to tear up, just like we did with MI. They will be giving us the dollar amount that would be placed in improving set improvements. So when we go and do Wagner Road, we would put that in. So there was a total amount that we worked with MI. We'll also work with this developer as well at the same time. There's ample enough room on both sides. Basically, from priestly south, there's actually a lot more right of way and less coordination than what we'll have to do priestly to broad. So there is ample space that's here. In fact, there's already existing right of way for us to redo the entire road and expand it to where we need to. The problem in lies with us having to expand to bring in the multi-use trail on the east side and the sidewalk on the west side. So that is where our additional right of way ask will be coming from to make sure that we're providing those pedestrian amenities that we have heard and listened to the residents here on Wagner Road time and time again say that is needed for the safety concerns and we absolutely agree. So it's a must, but that's where those right of way adjustments are coming from.
Okay.
Gentlemen, just to speak to as well on, because I was at the BZBA meeting, the developer has, has agreed to a zero dollar grant additional right of way if it's necessary to to make those Wagner Road improvements. But, but also Mr. Bowser kind of dovetailing with Mr. Hicks' point about the landscaping. Is it outside of the question that we could maybe get the city to commit to planting some trees at least along Wagner Road? You know, when you do those developments because, you know, that's typically kind of how that, that road is landscaped.
I think that's a fair point. I think also discussing that with the developer today on, you know, if they're willing to add additional landscaping, sort of buffer that for that.
Well, I, I wouldn't want to, the, the problem is, is I wouldn't want to plant trees that, once again, like the path you'd have to tear up to widen the road.
No, 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 I totally agree. And I guess what I was getting towards is, number one, that it doesn't look like they have a lot there. So if we're asking them to put that there, that's fine. Then we'll work with them to come up with a dollar amount so that could be planted thereafter those road improvements were done.
Okay. Mr. Benner, you have anything, questions?
I do, very quickly. Mr. Hicks mentioned the, the traffic count that he did not see. I too didn't see it. I see a letter saying the information has been attached to this letter, but the information wasn't provided in the packet, or at least I didn't see it. Do we have any further idea of when that count was done?
Yes, yeah, that was, that was pre-pandemic ODOT data. It was, it's in the BZBA packet, actually. I think max trip count was 280.
Is there an opportunity for us to get that attachment? Does anybody have it?
Ed, do you have access to that that you could share on the screen, please?
I can check. I don't think I do. I know it was a one-page document that we submitted. But I don't think I have it here where I could share the screen. I think we submitted it during the original submission.
Emily, do you have it?
I'm looking for it. I don't. I guess we could pull it from the BZBA packet and share that.
Maybe it also should be known too, and I think Mr. Hicks had asked for it in an email earlier this week, but this developer also utilized the traffic counts for a pre-COVID apartment complex that was denied on this site a couple of years back with obviously significant more trip counts with significant more units. So that was factored into their decision-making when, when drafting their analysis.
While we're looking for that, can someone tell me the height of these buildings? Units?
Tom, I believe you're on here, right?
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to confirm that. I don't know right offhand.
Yeah, this is Jason with Ryan Holmes. I will try to dive into that. Tech dimension.
I do know that they're on, I know the reason you're asking that question. I do know that we, we proposed this same building in Rose Hill and they are under the height requirement for Reynoldsburg.
Okay, that's what I was going for.
Yeah.
I found the trip count sheet. I'll try and either share my screen or email. Ed, I'll email to you. You can share your screen.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Yeah, and these, these are just the basic, just I guess, basic counts that we we actually received this from a traffic engineer we normally work with and it was basically, you plug in the number of units and it spits out some of these, some of these trip counts.
So this is kind of a cut and paste thing? It doesn't have anything to do with the actual traffic on Wagner Road?
Yeah, we didn't do actual counts to come up with this, this, this equation, these, these numbers.
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't think that anyone who lives anywhere near here doesn't expect that this is going to be a traffic problem. Whether the cookie cutter trip counts, regardless of what they say. You know, I actually live here and see it every day and traffic backs up on Wagner Road north almost all the way to the, not the church north of you, but another church about another half mile up, so traffic is a concern.
Mr. Benner, we did also review a traffic study done by the apartment complex that was potentially going to go in here a few years ago. And our trip counts were going to be significantly less than that and also did not go over the peak or whatever it was to get the access study.
I'm sorry, who, who was speaking?
I'm sorry, it was John Spagnola.
Okay.
It says alley on, on here. I apologize. It's my daughter's Zoom thing. I couldn't figure out how to change it.
A good question, Mr. Benner. Mr. Hicks, you have anything else other than you said you had landscaping? You have other questions?
Well, I mean, just to close out, no, just to close out traffic, I just want to make sure that these calculations, and I've seen how these calculations done before. It's based upon the land, the, the land use type. So this is a specific housing type and it's got a specific value and so they calculate that. And the city, from my understanding, has requirements in regards to how many trips that you're going to create, kind of determines how much of an in-depth of a traffic study you have to perform. And it appears, and that Mr. Bowser, anybody wants to chime in in case I'm off here, it appears that these number of trips are going to be low enough, there would not warrant a traffic access study or like a full-blown traffic study, regional traffic study, whatever they call it. So I just want to make sure that this information is being added to the record as part of this mission so that, so that everybody's aware that this work has been performed and, and that it's been addressed. The landscaping thing, you know, I, I think it's appropriate, especially with the character of the houses along Wagner Road. Wagner Road is for better, for worse, sort of a rural feeling road with a significant amount of landscaping and trees on either side of it. And I think as, as folks are coming out of the downtown or old Reynoldsburg area, that we need to start addressing that. I think this is the first property that I think it would be very appropriate to have trees along Wagner Road. And so I think it kind of gets to the root of, of some of my questions is just the, or concerns, I would say about the submittal is that you effectively have three full access curb cuts, assuming that you're able to obtain permission from the church to the north and the proximity of the units to Wagner Road and then the lack of landscaping along Wagner Road and then the architecture along Wagner Road. And I think in order to get my support for this particular site plan, I think those things need to be addressed. So just to reiterate, I think traffic, it seems like you're, you've done the calculations, but I don't know if that necessarily warrants multiple, you know, three full access curb cuts along that road. I don't know if that's comprehensively helping address our problems in regards to the traffic that everybody that lives up and down that road has to deal with.
Mr. Bowser, you, you did say that the mayor had reached out to the church and they, they would not be making that, that connection to the church property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so what we'll do there is turn that into like a little hammerhead area with some parking stalls. We just put that on there on the original rendering prior to us getting any information back from the church.
So, this is Mr. Collinum. I guess with that regard, how does the fire department feel with one access?
There would still be two accesses. It just wouldn't be the third.
So there'd be the two very close together accesses on Wagner Road.
And then not the one up to the north up into the private drive.
What is on the units 24, 5, 6, and 7? What's that? Is that all green space between the back of those buildings? Or I guess that'd be, yeah, that'd be the, what would that be? That'd be the front of the buildings? That'd be the, I don't know, what's the, what's 27, 24 through 27 facing Wagner? Would that be, that'd be the back of the building, that units, correct?
Yeah, that's these units right here, right?
That's all grass?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. What's going, is that just grass? You got to do any, anything special in there? Any dog park or anything at all?
Pat, I think that's a pretty good sizable slope that's there. It's kind of already exists now. So those would kind of be sitting up on a hill.
Okay.
And so those trees probably when they come in, there's probably not going to be a lot of visibility there. So doing some sort of park-like amenity outside of grass would probably be kind of difficult with that slope. Actually, the site, and you know, the reason why it's laid out this way and why we had that apartment complex that came in and because this is a challenging site, obviously the stormwater management area if we're walking through the site. You know, it, it sits all the way down, very high, low grade. You can see the trail that they had on sort of the back, the back end. It's, it's got to take a pretty decent grade that's down there. So they're, they're keeping that where it is. And so the homes will be on, all on a similar grade, pretty flat and even and, and build up sort of on a plateau. And then it kind of neanders back down towards Wagner Road. So a lot of this really won't even be seen from the road.
Okay, thanks.
To Mr. Hicks his concerns about the, the landscaping, John, would you be amenable to, to working with the city about coming to some sort of solution about planting some trees along Wagner Road?
We will, we definitely will. This, what we proposed here was just a proposed landscaping plan. When we go through engineering, we'll tweak this up and we'll add some, I'm using my mouse like you guys can see, I apologize. We'll add some landscaping along Wagner Road. Guess it doesn't help that I'm pointing stuff with my mouse, but I'm not sharing my screen, so I guess.
And, and whatever proposed landscaping we come up with, obviously, Andrew, we can talk about the fee in lieu of and, you know, work with your construction schedule.
Of course. I mean, once we get fully into the engineering and you understand sort of those costs, it's the same thing that we did with MI during their process. Came up with a fee structure. We would just make sure that that would be equivalent. And obviously that was based on some of their linear footage on, on, on Wagner Road. You'll obviously have significantly less. Obviously, their development is 354 homes and yours is 80, so it kind of goes into the calculation.
I have a question. One of the things that Mr. Hicks addressed was the front of the, the, the look of the Wagner front of the 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 look of the Wagner Road facing properties. Any early thoughts from the developer on what to do to modify, enhance that a little bit?
You getting the landscaping package?
No, the Mr. Steve, what did you, Stephen, what did you, what word did you use?
Yeah, the the building elevations. I think we, we, we had a supplemental email that came through with some additional building elevations. But exactly, you know, which elevation would be applicable to that area wasn't clear. And there's certainly a lot of variety. I mean, I'd hate to see a essentially a three-story wall of vinyl all along Wagner Road. And I'm sure that there's some different options that you guys have in regards to façades and coverings to include things like stone and windows and shutters and trim.
We've got this Jason Brown with Ryan Holmes. As you mentioned, we we certainly have several of those options. So once we kind of finalize the landscaping plan to see what fits, I'm looking at several options right now, broken up by three, four, or five windows on one example with both siding stone or vertical board and bat and shake shingles. So we we have plenty of those options to choose from. So I think it just, whatever look matches over there, we can certainly solve that on those three, four, or five elevations that are along Wagner.
Mr. Benner, what'd you say?
No, I said that's exactly what we were asking for, and I think that that addresses that particular issue.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. Mr. First, you good with that commitment? Miss Cullen?
Yeah. Okay. Just a, you know, email going out to us to kind of look at it.
Okay. Any other comments from the presenters? Staff, you have anything you want to add or comment on? Commissioners, anything from you?
Mr. Chairman, I think just try to communicate, you know, exactly what I think needs, needs to happen in order to warrant support for the project. And you know, I hate having to sort of just conditionally approve things when we get a little bit more complex, other than just like one single thing or maybe two single things. So I mean, my preference here would be to just table this proposal and and give the opportunity for the development team to modify the landscape plan to address the the building setback issue on the front there and to address the elevations. And and I certainly know that, you know, delays, you know, thirty days or on a project are are challenging, but you know, with with how much scrutiny there is and how much how many people drive up and down Wagner Road in this area of the city every day. And I think it's more important that we get this right than to just expedite this. I'm I'm supportive of the use and supportive of the the product that's going to go there. Ryan's a good company, has a great product. I I think this is the right fit for this spot in the city, but I think that there's some pretty significant details here that need to get worked out first before we approve this and and pass it along to city staff to enforce. So my preference would be to to table this submission tonight and 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 ask if the developers could go to work to to make some adjustments in order to address these issues and bring it back to us next month.
Comments on that, Mr. Hicks' statement? Anybody?
Mr. Hicks, could you, just just so everybody's clear, could you lay out exactly what you would like them to do if we were going to vote to table that this evening?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think one of the the biggest things that I understand that the Wagner Road improvements, we're still working on exactly what what the 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 right of way dedication would be, but I really don't feel comfortable approving a project that will turn right around within a year or two and become a non-conforming use because the front yard setback's not sufficient. So I think that there's two of those lots that that need to be examined, and and maybe they work, maybe they don't. But I think that needs to be addressed. I think there needs to be additional landscaping, some variety in the landscaping, landscaping along Wagner Road to make it more appropriate to fit in with the rest of the development that's along Wagner Road. I think we need to finalize what the access situation is. Or, you know, I know that you're saying you could just hammerhead that going into the church, but if we need to pick, we need to get that issue resolved, and it needs to be concluded that that's just going to end right there, be a hammerhead rather than than be a third access. Then then the, within the two accesses, one of them probably should be a right in, right out. I've, you know, tried to work on projects in other municipalities, and if I brought them three full curb cuts, it's, it normally doesn't work, maybe two works, but maybe one of them is is limited access. I would like some maybe the city engineer, EMHNT to provide some input on that. The elevations, I think you you already have the elevations available, what Ryan Holmes traditionally does. I think you pick some of the nicer ones to put alongside elevations there along Wagner Road. And and then I think it, I feel more comfortable about it fitting in with our existing code and within that existing community.
Fellow commissioners, any I mean, is that, can we, any feedback, pushback?
I agree with Mr. Hicks' comments, especially the three full access curb cuts on the short stretch of Wagner.
I too agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, Chief Governor. Yeah, there's only going to be two, right? Curb cuts. I I keep hearing three, but the one was denied. So we're really only looking at two. I like the idea of right in, right out. I don't have an issue with that. And rather, I guess, at this point than maybe asking us commissioners how we feel. How is this, if we table this, how's this going to affect the developer? Any comments from the developer?
Yeah, I mean, we we can definitely work through your issues. I mean, obviously, our preference wouldn't be to table, but we understand if that would need to be, and you know, we could work through the access points and the landscaping and get you guys some firm shots on the renderings and and get it back out to you.
I I appreciate that. Mr. Better, keep going.
Well, I would just say in that case, if Mr. Hicks would like to make a motion, I think it's done.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table the application till our next regularly scheduled or special meeting, next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, very good. We have a first and a second. Comments? Any additional comments, I should say? Okay, staff, could you read the role, please?
Ms. Better?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. First?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll.
Yes. Okay. All right, well, in the development, developers, thank you for your, your time on this one. Let's button up a couple of these little things and then we'll revisit this in early April.
Thank you all. We'll be back in touch with revised information and we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Mr. Bowser, there is no other business, is it correct?
No, I don't think so, but I did want to just put on a clarifying note. Sort of, I know they're kind of going off, but if you look in the plans and I I recommend, I think Stephen, you brought up this point, worried about sort of the setbacks. So the minimum setback in suburban residential is twenty feet at its tightest, which is the one that's closest to the road. It is at thirty feet towards the rear of that multi-use trail. Therefore, that's ten feet of play. So I do not think the calculations are off by any stretch of the imagination of ten feet. So they are well within what they would need to, and it would not be a non-conforming use. It would still be permitted under the current zoning code, even if we did have to eat into that just a little bit.
That'd be great. I'd recommend the developers to add that dimension on the drawing so that that's very clear where that building's going to be. That'd be great.
Yeah, good idea. Okay. All right, gentlemen, anything that we need to be aware of or plan for, staff? Anything? Okay. Well, with that, then we are adjourned, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you for your time.
Good evening.
You too.
John, I love your pirate shirt.